Mic test, mic test, one, two, three, mic test. Test. Mic test, one, two, three, mic test.
All right, so we're going to call the Victoria County Municipal Council meeting for Monday, May 27th to order. We would like to acknowledge that this meeting is being held in Yunnan Magi, one of the seven traditional districts of the Mi'kmaq and the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. So the agenda has been circulated to you. Are there any additions or deletions? Okay, and if you would be so kind to, we'll do that under district concerns and, and just make mention of it then, Paul, and then we'll deal with it. Counselor McNeil? Sorry, Counselor McLeod, did you have? No, we're good. So with that addition to the, the agenda that we're going to include under district concerns, under district number one, are there any other additions or deletions? Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor McNeil. Second, about Counselor McDonald, we approve the agenda with the note to change. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion is carried. So this afternoon, we're pleased to have a daycare update from Gwen Jarabek and Matt Hart, so I'd ask you to come forward. Know if we don't have two chairs there for you, just pull. Yep. Just while you're making yourself comfortable, we'll just note in the minutes that Counselor Patterson is absent today, and he has sent his regrets. So Gwen, you have a presentation that you're going to take us through, and great, and we'll just give you a few minutes to set up there, and when you're ready, just let me know. You and you are welcome to council both.
All right, well, thanks, everyone, for having us. So I'm Gwen Jarabek, Matt Hart, and we're here to give an update on the Tag here on Daycare Society. And so I just thought we would, we just put a couple of points on the slides, just to give you some information on kind of where we're at with each of our developments. So quickly, my agenda will be to go through the Bidek site, the Inguinish site in the Bay St. Lawrence, but actually, I reverse the order, Bidek's going to be last. But at any rate, so let's start with Bay St. Lawrence. So for everyone's awareness, Bay St. Lawrence is an old consolidated school that's a site of community activities. Part of our mandate with this funding was to co-locate at community spaces, much like we did when we opened the daycare facility in Bidek, with the goal that our presence, like the revenue that we bring in through our capital investments, the revenue that the facility benefits from with our monthly rent helps to help sustain the ongoing operations of community activities. To give you an idea, just kind of like a short list, for the spaces, we were hoping, we are looking at opening 18 toddler and preschool spaces. We started out with an initial budget of $323,000, and our current budget rests around $350,000. Our biggest opportunity is that this is, of course, the location. There hasn't been a licensed childcare facility in this community before, and it's, it's a gorgeous spot. We've positioned the playgrounds so that the children have literally views of the harbor and can watch the flow of community come in and out, and our partnership with the community group there. Our biggest challenge has been the regulatory hurdles of modernizing a new space. So I'll speak more to this later, but of course, everyone is familiar with the work that we did in Bidek, and it took us about a year to get that site going. And I'm going to mention this a couple of times throughout the presentation, but for your reference, when we opened Bidek, which was four infant spaces and 22 toddler preschooler spaces, we opened it, we had a budget, a grant from the province of $100,000, and we opened that facility in Bidek for $108,000. That was roughly at a cost of $4,000 per space. Right now, at the Bay St. Lawrence site, we're running at about $15,000 per space, and that comes with the requirements to make sure that the space meets fire safety code. So right now, where we're at is we are still working with the, our engineer and the office of the fire marshal to get the permit that we need to actually get into the space to finish the renovations. We're expecting that the drawings will be into the office of the fire marshal for June 4th. It usually takes them about two weeks to review, at which point, the work for the Bay St. Lawrence site roughly is about two months in duration. Overall, it's a very small project in terms of the cap, the changes that we're making to the space. We're putting in a washroom with two toilets and two sinks, putting in new windows, but we also have to modernize the space to make it fire code compliant. So what that looks like is things like two-hour fire separation surrounding the perimeter, building fire safety exits, fire safety plans. It looks like bringing in air filtration systems. So overall, while it is in scope, a very small project, and initially when we started, and with our, based upon our experience in Bidek, should only take two months, and we truly did expect it to be completed in 2022, nearly, or 2023. The, making sure that we are compliant with fire safety standards has taken longer than anticipated. Britain Ganish, for everyone's reference, we had initially planned on opening that site as a space for 10 infants, and then a combined classroom of 18 for toddlers and preschoolers. However, the complexities of that site and kind of ongoing issues have caused us to have to revisit the notion of putting in infants at this time, and proceed with having one room for 18 toddlers and one room for 24 preschoolers. And as I go through the budget, you'll start to see why. The initial budget for that site was $415,000. Again, these weren't major capital investments. It was flooring, a little bit of plumbing for toilets, replacing some windows, and then, of course, fire separation, two-hour fire separation between us and the other entities that use the space. Again, our biggest opportunities here is that model of co-location. So the location that we're in, Inguinish, has never had licensed childcare before. And then again, that community partnership, creating that opportunity for groups to co-locate in one space, so that we can support one another and help sustain critical community activities. Our biggest challenges and delays have been the UARB review, the Fiona damages, and the new beautiful roof unfortunately costs us 40% extra in cost for fire separation, which was our, ultimately our reason for having to abandon putting infants in that space, because we were looking at roughly, we hadn't completed the cost, costing out of it, but was looking to be close to 450 to 500,000, just to put sprinklers into the whole building. There are more cost-effective options that we can look at in the future with future funding models, so this is why we're taking the approach that we are. So Bidek, the renovations required to complete, to open are complete, i.e. that the classrooms for the children are complete, the bathrooms are complete, the playground is complete. This is, again, a very interesting point, and why I really want us to hone in on the difference that we are encountering in 2020 versus the reality of 2024. So I'm just going to reiterate that point, that in 2020, we opened Bidek's site for $108,000. We were only $8,000 over budget, and that gave us 22 childcare spaces in total. Our Bidek site, in theory, when we were looking at it based upon our previous experience, only needed about another $290,000 in renovations for us to be able to open up the classroom. For anybody who is familiar with the Bidek site, I'm sure you're wondering, well, you were using half the hall, why couldn't you just put children in the other half? But it's actually not that simple. We have, our, all of our work is governed by provincial acts, so everything that we do from our space requirements to how we operate on a daily basis is written down in a provincial act. So there are details like, for every 10 children, you need one toilet and one sink. So while we had that other classroom, we did not have one toilet per 10 children, we did not have one sink per 10 children. And those are the types of adjustments that we had to make. Over the course of our experience working at the Bidek site, despite the fact that the building had previously been inspected by fire marshals and had been signed off, which is actually, again, a regulatory requirement for us to open, we ended up facing over $200,000 of additional costs to complete fire separation work. This required us covering the whole ceiling of the deck with two layers of Jiprock. It required complete, it required substantial updates to the sprinkler system. It also required substantive updates to the electrical systems. So what's interesting is that now you, that's how you see the budget switch so drastically from $290,000 to close to $700,000 for the site. In addition to that, we received provincial funding to support the heat pumps, we received provincial funding to support the painting. I'm sure everybody's very happy that that building's getting painted this week. But really and truly, again, our biggest opportunity of this site is our location and our partnership. We do love the spot, the children love the spot, they're connected to community, they're connected to our waterfront, they're connected to the fire department. You know, the fire, the fire department does have a special bond with the kids, and the kids really enjoy watching them come in and out. Just, that's kind of like the high-level overview of where we're at with each of the sites. I guess I'm remiss for saying that if I go back to, just to the Inguinish site, so where are we at with that site? We've, our drawings had to be completely redone after the renovations with the roof, so we are now, we now have our drawings complete. The, they just went out for electrical quote, and we got that back. So now we're looking, working with our contractors to set out the timeline for this site. We are looking at roughly four months of work. Again, we're not talking about major construction renovations, we're talking about floors, we're talking about walls, we're talking about windows, we're talking about some toilets. But at the end of the day, this is the cost to get this work done. So where in 2020, we opened up our sites at roughly a cost of $4,500 per childcare space, we're averaging a cost of about $25,000 per childcare space. It is literally an entirely different world that we are in, in terms of what it's taken. There is, as always, a bright and shining light to things. You would have seen that we've started our recruitment efforts for the childcare facilities, and we have so far received over 90 applications of people who are in Canada who want to come to our community to work. I can staff as many daycares as we could build at this point with that number of applications. They're all highly qualified, they're all motivated, and they all, and the majority of whom also are very supportive of our mission and values, which were to create a childcare space that's natural, free of plastics, is based on child-led learning, and has children outside as much as possible. COVID changed those ideals a bit, if you, if you can imagine. It's, it's very difficult to do infection prevention and control with natural products and felts. You need to introduce a little bit of plastic so that you can create that space. But we do still work with that mandate of having the children outside and focusing on that child-led learning, a mashup of kind of the best attributes of Montessori, Waldorf, and Forest schools kind of all rolled into one. I think if, if, I think at the end of the day, you can see that there have been substantive hurdles that we've worked through with the support of our engineer, with our amazing contractors. Our next hurdle is going to be housing in communities for the 90 people, that we're not hiring 90 people, for the people that want to come and be a part of our facilities. And so I'd like to put that perhaps foremost in the minds of our counselors, and if there's anybody that is watching this presentation, we have people that want to come work in our communities, we have people that want to come be a part of our businesses, but we are facing both transportation needs and housing needs to locate that workforce to our communities to make the project successful. When we put this bid into the province, we were confident that we could build the daycares, okay, perhaps at a bit of a faster timeline than what we've been faced with. But we did point out to the province that our largest concern was going to be capacity for housing. And right now, as I'm looking at, as we're looking at hiring people for these sites and for these positions, that's never been more clear, the need for housing in our communities. And I just wanted to put that out there as a final pitch for housing, not that it's technically your domain, but if you need it for any reports that you're writing, we can give you any information that you need. Matt, did you want to add anything? Okay, we're happy to take questions.
Thanks, that was great, really. And the housing and transportation, we hear it every day, every day. So we're going to open it up to questions or comments, maybe start this side of the table. Do you have some questions, Counselor?
It's approximately four months, you say, till Inguinish may open? Yeah, and is there a date for the Bay St. Lawrence?
So what we're, no, not yet. We're hoping to get our dates set, I'm hoping, within the next two weeks. As you can imagine, it's a 10, it's a very tender thing for us to want to try to speculate on right now, because we don't want to make promises that we can't keep. So what I can tell you is that the review of the drawings will be June 4th, it typically takes two weeks. Our permit for Bay St. Lawrence has been paid for since last August. So that's paid for, so we just need the permit issued, and then the work can begin. Our contractor is ready to go, and then it takes two months after that. But I'd like, I'd like us to have a good two more weeks before we, before we start to call any dates.
Yeah, and I also heard, I don't know if it's a rumor or not, that the roof in Inguinish cost $100,000. Is that correct?
I, that would be a council thing.
The roof cost $100,000? Like, that just blew my mind when I heard that, because I know someone in the area that got a roof done, a metal roof, and it was like, $8,000? A specialized roof for fire, or? Okay, so you made it not a flat roof, so it was like construction of underneath that? If so what? Okay, thanks for your presentation.
No problem. So I cannot take any credit, I need to put it on official record. That slide was a deck that was pre-designed by PowerPoint, so I should perhaps give credit on the public record where credit is due. But that, the roof, unfortunately, and this, it is not a criticism, it's the way things work out, is, is the reason why we can't proceed with infants at this point. We had to do an entire new fire separation system for the roof, which would be where the, for the two layers that are occupied, would be a water sprinklered system. It would have to be an entirely different dry system, because the attic is cold. And so when we look at that amount of investment for that building, there's more strategic opportunities that we can look at in the future with like modular units that we could put on-site, rather than putting all of that expense into that building.
Counselor McDonald or Deputy Warden, either questions or comments?
Couple of quick questions. Just want to first, if you could explain, how did you come to the Bay St. Lawrence site, where it's at the end of the district? And I've had calls from many people saying that they didn't understand why the daycare center went to the end, when there's more of the work-related areas are in the middle towards Dingwall, Cape North area. Like, what was your process of that selection?
Yeah, so that's, it was the proximity to the elementary school was the first piece. The second piece was the requirement to co-locate with other facilities. So in terms of buildings that had the capacity to house us, that was the only one. So our interior requirements require us to have 30 square feet per child on the inside, which means we need a very large footprint in a building in order to house our classes. We've also taken on the philosophy to have oversized classrooms, because at the end of the day, 30 square feet per child isn't a lot of room, and that wasn't something that we wanted to give up on for the sake of a site. We are, we are very lucky that childcare We are, we are very lucky that childcare facilities are funded by the province because we require a very large square footage and have a correspondingly very low revenue stream to cover the cost of, of that physical space.
Right, I'm so glad that you said that, that the childcare spaces were funded by the province. Because I probably get a call every week or other, other week saying that the municipality has to step up their gains. They're funding the childcare piece. So it's gone on four years and we're still waiting for childcare. I'm just wondering, is it coming another two years? Because just, there's so much.
Norman, don't you dare, I put that thought out.
I have to.
Take it back right now.
Honestly, because as a councillor, that's the calls I'm getting, right? I just want you to be able to explain. My question, I guess, is, have you ever done any public consultation within the community to come talk to the people? Have you done any of that yet?
Not recently.
Is that something maybe that you could consider?
Oh, absolutely. So.
I think that would alleviate a lot of that.
Yeah, we did at the beginning certainly work with community a fair bit to choose the sites. The other reason that we chose the sites in, in the manner that we did is there's no, there's no household that's more than 30 minutes away from a childcare facility based upon the way that they're positioned. And that was kind of the, the other reason for the method to the madness. I hear your point and that's valid. An update to communities is probably overdue. And I think naively, optimistically, we keep hoping for a solid date in terms of the updates. And I think the other thing that's important to mention is the climate that we've been working in in terms of contractors and, and professionals has been a very challenging climate, not that it's anybody's fault. Many engineers and architects that I've spoken to in their 35 career have not seen this level of demand. So unfortunately, we're becoming, an island that's becoming a victim of our own success and the novelty of being here and the opportunity that's here. Was that a lean into? No?
And just lastly, with the contractor piece, I hope that if he can, try to keep within local.
It has, yeah, yeah. We, we, we had difficulty finding contractors. First, we did look in local communities and our timelines actually at the beginning were fairly tight and aggressive. We wanted to get everything going as quickly as we could and even the local contractors didn't have that opportunity. But they're all kind of Inverness or Victoria County contractors that we're working with.
Great. If you do come to do the public base, I'll be there with a teapot on.
We are going to have councillors some very big parties when these sites open. And I think you all better come best dressed and, and ready to celebrate.
Deputy Ward.
Thanks, Gwen. Matt, appreciate it. Thanks for the update. And we'll get Mr. McDonald or Councillor McDonald do the singing. I won't offer when you have that celebration. Just a couple of things. Number one, Norman, I'll already mention the responsibility. Like, say, we get calls asking what the municipality is doing and it's really a provincial responsibility. So when you're talking to people, if you tell them really it's the province they should be talking to, not the municipality, we'll do what we can, but it's, it's not a municipal responsibility. Just getting back to the roof, the reason they did go with the hip roof is we met with the society and asked them what they wanted. They said it was really hard to maintain the flat roof and they would like to see a roof that they could reshingle themselves and stuff. So that's why you seen the change in the roof. It was, it was their, their decision to make that thing. And we did assist with the cost to, to that roof. Oh, it is, yeah. Nope, it's, it'd be a lot easier for them to look after too, which is the big thing. I guess the other thing is you mentioned 90 people have answered your recruiting, which is great to see it out there. But is there any local? Are you seeing any local or? There is some? Okay, good.
It's been lovely. Was that all your comments?
No, no, that was the biggest thing is that. And the other thing is housing. I don't know if you know, but there was an announcement this morning of over $7 million for infrastructure in Inghamish, which would be septic and your facility would be one of the key ones to go on to that system. But hopefully that will entice more building and more housing in the areas is the goal there. So keep our fingers crossed that we get more housing in the area. And there's also an apartment building going up right behind the, behind the property that you're looking at right now. So maybe some other options there in the area with that. But no, great work. I wish it was tomorrow it was opening. But we'll take whatever we can get if it's going to be four months. But please push on and see where we can get what it's definitely greatly needed in the area. We do appreciate the work you're doing for it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. The, the, could I dance philosophically, perhaps, if you don't mind? Wax philosophically for a moment on the, on the provincial versus municipal piece? While I, the daycare, I totally agree. We are totally regulated by the province. There's provincial acts that we have to follow. It doesn't mean there is an opportunity for council to support. And the way other councils have been offering that support, like Inverness County, is through funding. So there's opportunities to help fund, to support the childcare, if that's something that the council wants to make a priority. And that could be things either from helping us with capital costs. It could be things from helping us with enrichments going forward. Because I think it's important for you to understand that the funding that comes from the province is for the, is for the core operations, for the staff and, and, and for the operational costs. But when you kind of look at that enrichment piece, so what's like the value add, the little bit of extra that can be done? And the needs that are in our communities, I mean, that's certainly a place where council could help us going forward. Sometimes we put in grant applications and they have been denied. So maybe taking a look at those more closely in the future to say, okay, well, wait a minute, what type of priority action can we put to support the ongoing operation? Because one thing that's been happening is the new childcare expansion has certainly, not only has the plane been built while we were flying, we've been building the landing strip as well. Literally all aspects are being constructed as we go, from the funding model to how we operate. And so what's happening is the $10 a day childcare is, while the province is supporting that with additional funding for childcare facilities, it means that we aren't getting $35 and $40 a day to support our expenses. And, and we have to see what that model looks like going forward. But I would say that there is certainly always opportunity for council to support through fiscal opportunities. And I'm very happy to give you ideas. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, there's just like one extra thing. Like for all our parent committees, so parent committee is an offset of the board, they're responsible for fundraising. So I believe in our 2024 budget, we still have that set for $14,000. So that's something that our parents, and this is not in the range of expanding to Inghamish and Bay St Lawrence, pulling those parents out to increase the fundraising, which we're going to have to do. So there's still a lot of importance on the parent committee to fundraise to keep the operation going. Like Gwen had mentioned, a lot of the, a lot of the costs, although it's $10 a day, they come from the province. But they're set. I remember, it's kind of a funny story, but when we originally opened, Diane and I went over the books of how much actually we were getting to cover the costs of the staff. And they, we reviewed the numbers and we said, no, this can't be correct. Can't be correct, because we were actually operating after week one in the deficit. And we said, well, we have to change some pretty significant issues there just to address the funding. And, and it's difficult, it, it's a lot better now, but there is still that burden where you have to be fiscally responsible, make sure that you're, you know, not overspending. So even though there's more money from the province to provide to the daycares, it's still an area of concern for us, for sure.
If, if you'd permit me, I'd like to just piggyback off of what Matt just said because he subtly glossed over the work that me and Diane did in terms of managing the finances for the daycare in the first couple of years of opening. So I am going to take a moment to celebrate you and like shine a big light on you there, Matt and Diane. So when we opened, the province expected that we would operate in the deficit for the first three years. That has not been the case. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have, they have kept the daycare out of the deficit this entire time. So that's a huge accomplishment because typically daycare facilities are not meant to hit that break-even point until the third year of operation. So kudos to you guys.
And then it might be just one other thing that the council could do on behalf of the daycare. We can pass out the details, I think, a little bit later. Is that currently, right now, we are looking for the executive director across all three sites. And we have one executive director and they're, you know, that taking on the financial responsibility role, you know, HR management. So it's really a role that's not specific for these new sites. ECEs are trained in child development, but they, the province expects for the funding to attach itself to that position, they have to be trained ECE. So even though Glenn had said there's 90 applicants, those are for ECEs. We've only had one applicant for the executive director role. So we're asking the province to change their funding requirements that our executive director does not have to be an ECE. They can get assistance from the assistant directors who are ECEs at each location. But we're asking the province to change that rule so we can get the funding for that. So maybe that's something the municipality can help us with as well, and then change their mind.
That could be something. We could do a letter for support on that. So are you going to have an executive director at each location or just one for all three?
There'll be one executive director, director managing every, like all three sites. But onsite, there'll be assistant directors who are ECE-trained, helping with the day-to-day.
Good, no, that's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to shift over to this side of the table. We'll start with Councillor McNeil, Councillor Organ or Councillor MacLeod. Anybody have any questions or comments? Councillor McNeil, do you want to?
Just thanks for the presentation. Gwen and Matt, I'm kind of, my daughter works at the, at the daycare. So it's, it's important to the community. I, I know it is. And I know how busy they are there with, with the children. And just one question, when, when I was down with the playground, there, there is some tape around the playground.
We don't want to mention that.
Move along, Paul. So that is, so basically in the slide, when it was installed by the contractor, there is a little area that moves the slide from being considered an embankment slide to a regular slide. Like, it's like it's this big. So it goes from us needing a one-foot fall zone to a six-foot fall zone. So we have to like reshape the land around the slide so that the slide is an embankment slide. Otherwise, we have to take everything out and create a six-foot fall zone. It, it's the subtleties of regulation and, and safety standards. So it was, it was one of those things that just.
But that is being done.
So we have an engineer working on that right now and it'll be redesigned by the, by the landscaper.
Thanks for the presentation. Just one clarification. You mentioned that your facilities are within 30 minutes that people can get to them. Is that just for like the communities of Bay St Lawrence, Asby Bay for north and Inghamish for the Inghamish site? Because I'm sure the children in Wakepoint are more than 30 minutes away from either site.
To either site? Well, I mean, that was an observation that came from one of our, our partners that said you guys have pretty much gotten all the sites positioned in a, like, I mean, in a 30 kilometer distance or, or 30-minute distance. 30 minutes away. There's going to be some outliers.
There are going to be 40 minutes. I mean, the province just announced a new round of funding as well. So the new round of funding actually will allow a, an existing daycare to actually construct new daycares. So they're not, as our model is occurring right now, where we have to have existing infrastructure. This allows for new construction. So if there is any non-profit entities that wanted to apply for that, I, I don't think we have the appetite for it at this point in time. Just because it has been an extensively long road for all of our volunteers, so. But there is money out there for new development. So if anybody is listening, then they have that opportunity to apply for, for new funding, to build something.
And the funding is also there for in-home childcare. Thanks. And that's, to answer that question a little bit more fully, that was the other piece, is that the one thing that we are missing in our county is in-home daycare facilities to supplement the licensed childcare facilities that we have. So there was an, an vision at the beginning that at some point there would be a spattering of in-home facilities that would open up over time.
Thank you. Councillor MacLeod, any questions or comments?
Thank you for coming. Thank you for the presentation. And congratulations for, you know, Bdec, we're lucky to still have you guys. I know it's a big help for our workforce in Bdec. So just, can you tell me, you, you have waiting lists in Bdec, how much is your cap? And talking about transportation that you're looking for north, it's for the staff that you are looking, because we have the Victoria County Transit, so it's running there. So you can have, you know, it's right, you're right dialed for the people who need it. So yeah, just to know, to know how is Bdec with the waiting list and your cap for the people around here.
So Bdec, I, I don't have numbers on the waitlist at this, at this point, but I feel like it, when we open, we're pretty much going to fill the new spaces. And it's 24 preschool spaces and, and six additional infant spaces that we're opening. And with the transportation piece, I think that's fantastic. If Victoria County Transit can, can support a daily commute to people's work, like to and from, I think that that's, that's very cool, if that can happen. I wasn't aware, like necessarily, that that, that the service could support like a five-day, a week commute for people or a week.
Well, yes, Monday to Friday and on the weekends. Will be grow if we have more drivers, of course, is the same, we are in the same situation about needed staff, right? And, but thank you so much and good luck, yeah. And it's, it's an, it's an honor to have you in Bdec. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. And I'm just going to go to the CAO before we wrap up because I understand you have a, you're on a time.
I just have a couple of quick ones. Okay, so in Bay St Lawrence, so the washrooms that we've put in the Bay St Lawrence Community Centre, the two washrooms there, do they help out or did they help out? No.
Unfortunately, not.
They're not kid-sized.
That's it. Like, ultimately, technically, you don't necessarily want kid-sized toilets because then you have the cost of maintaining them with getting clogged very easily. But the, the toilets have to be in the classroom so that the children can go supervise.
Okay. And on the Inghamish, we'll go, I'll go back to the roof also. So you didn't go forward with the sprinkler system?
No.
Okay, you're going to do it through modulators?
Yeah, we're, we'll look at, we are another entity, we'll look at modulators in the future, but it just, it wasn't worth the investment at that point.
Okay, and that 40% increase, that's not spent? Or it's not going to be spent because we paid for the roof that's there currently? So the 40% increase on the roof that you had there, was that built into your new costs? Or if, if that was what you were going to do?
Sprinkling for the roof was, was the increased cost.
Right, but you, you didn't have to do that because you're going a different way?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the 40% increase is a budget if you would have done the sprinklers in the system?
No, it was above what we had a budgeted. Like, it was, sorry, it was, it was partially included in that. But what we're also seeing is increased costs for renovations, so it will get used, but just not for the sprinklers.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, Really, for your presentation. It was a great update. And honestly, I can tell you, I lived through a very active, in the community, very active nursery school daycare program, then it went to non-viable, to non-existent. You guys brought it back. And honest God, every week I hear about the facility and the good work that you're doing and the need that you're addressing in the community. So you, you really checked a lot of those boxes of what you started and what you wanted to accomplish. So kudos to you for doing that. And I would encourage you as a deputy warden, if you're looking for potential partners with the executive director and if there's something we can do along there. We can't answer unless you ask and I would encourage you to move forward with that. You probably do it before our budget deliberations come next spring, so. Let her, let her support them. Whatever you need along those lines, we're more than happy to help.
Yeah, thank you for that. We really appreciate it. It's, we wish it, we wish it had been done faster, but as I hope the numbers show that it's been a very different, just been a very different environment.
No, and, and honestly, we, we appreciate that because you're sitting in a building that every time we, we look at trying to estimate something from four years ago, it's doubled in price. So we, we understand where you're coming from. So I want to thank you very much and I want to get you out the door on the time that you wanted to leave, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And we look forward to you coming back. Thanks, Matt.
Take care, guys.
Thanks, Gwen. So we're going to move on to the next item. We have the Strategic Planning Commission here. Sean Donovan is here with some demolition orders. So Sean, if you'd like to come forward, please, and we'll just give you a minute to shift over your program. Welcome to council, Sean, and we're going to proceed with your presentation. And we'll do individual properties. If it's green, it's on. And if you want to mute it, just press it.
All right, thanks for having me.
We're just going to do, we have two properties, correct?
Two properties.
So we'll do them individually, just so we'll stop between the two.
Okay, the first property we have is the property of David and Carrie McDonald at 2129 Highway 312, River Bennett. So we received the formal complaint. The property inspection was completed and there's a dwelling and an old shed on the property. Property was posted with the date and time for this meeting on April 29th. The notice was also sent via Canada Post to the mailing addresses that were found on file on property online. You can see the building. It's open and accessible. Significant amount of rot, structural damage in both the foundation and the structural walls, the roofing material. Shed is in a dilapidated condition as well. The building appears abandoned, is dilapidated, has significant portions of structural elements in question. Building's open and accessible, leaning in several spots due to the foundational structural deficiencies. And the accessory building is also dilapidated and open and accessible. The buildings are in a ruinous dilapidated condition, such a state of non-repairs to be no longer suitable for human habitation. The property is unsightly in relationship to neighboring properties due to the exterior finish of the building not being maintained. So they're severely neglected and dilapidated. They meet the municipal government act definition as dangerous and unsightly. Therefore, our recommendation is that in order to remedy the condition be issued and the order be a demolition order issued from council to the owners. The order should state that the owners of the buildings are to be demolished and all the debris be removed of and disposed of in the appropriate manner within 30 days. Property owner fails to comply, the municipality will complete the same and recover the costs.
Thank you very much. Please just go back to slide with the legal name of the owner, please. Just so we. Legal name of the owner.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. So it's property of David and Carrie McDonald.
Correct.
So I just want to check, is there anybody here representing David and Carrie McDonald? There is not. So that is a recommendation from Planning Commission. What are council's wishes? Any question?
Did they just, did he just sell that? Or something the other owner, because that's not the name of the person who I spoke to that owned the property. Was not a McDonald.
That was.
But he may have, he told me that he was hoping to sell it.
May have, but the current one on property online was, was this. At the time of the order and everything, I haven't checked today, but.
So there is nobody here to speak on behalf, so.
In the, in the, in the event that it was sold, the order stays with the property. So it doesn't, if it was sold and it's under a different name now, the order would still stay with the PID number and so.
Any further questions? So you need a motion to order a, for a demolition order for property of David and Carrie McDonald, 2129 Highway 312, River Bennett, Nova Scotia.
I'll make that a motion that we proceed with the recommendation.
It's a move by the deputy warden, second by councillor McNeil. All in favor? Contrary minded, the motion is carried and demolition order will be signed. Second property.
The second property we have is the property of Albert and Delia Buffett, 2132 Highway 312, River Bennett. Again, we received the formal complaint. We investigated the property. And there's a mobile home, two travel trailers and two sheds on the property. Property was posted with the date and time of this meeting on April 29th. Notice was also sent via Canada Post to the mailing address on property online. So as you can see, the first building is one of the sheds and the back building is the mobile home. Next is one of the travel trailer. Next is another shed behind the travel trailer. Front of the shed. Front of the mobile home, you can see that front window is smashed. The front window of the door is smashed and the door on the left. You see my mouth. The second entrance is open and accessible. This is on the water side. The skirting is all gone. The roofing has issues. This is the camper, one of the campers, the travel trailers on the property. This is the second travel trailer on the property. Both are open and accessible and have severe structural damage. All of, all the buildings appear abandoned and are dilapidated and have significant portions of structural elements in question. The buildings are open and accessible and the accessory buildings are also dilapidated and open and accessible. Buildings are in a ruinous and dilapidated condition. They're in such a state of non-repares to be no longer suitable for human habitation. And the property is unsightly in relationship to neighboring properties due to the exterior finish of the buildings not being maintained. So they're severely neglected and dilapidated. They meet the municipal government act as dangerous and unsightly. Therefore, our recommendation that in order to remedy the condition be issued and the order be a demolition order issued from council to the owners. The order should state to the owners that the buildings are to be demolished and all the debris be removed of and disposed of in the appropriate manner within 30 days. If the property owner fails to comply, the municipality will complete the same and recover the costs.
Do you wish to speak to the property, sir? And I would ask you to speak into the mic and make sure the green button is on. And we'll keep your comments to the property itself, please.
Okay. The work that I did last spring. And I spent about, in total about two weeks replacing the roof, which had been damaged by Fiona and the siding. And your photograph shows what it was like before I fixed it. So you haven't updated some of those holders. When were those holders taken, by the way? Of what year?
Those were taken last month, Mr. Buffett, and quite recent.
And you're giving me 30 days to. Okay, I, I, I know it's been neglected. And there's reasons for it. I'm not going to go into big details about it.
No.
It's got to do with my health.
Right.
And my wife. It's been neglected. I'd like to be given the chance to bring it up to snuff. Enough where I can hopefully sell it over the next two or three months. But I would automatically remove the two trailers that have been damaged as soon as I could. But the main trailer, I think should remain there. It's an old trailer. I had put a new roof on it. I can't, I haven't been there since last September, so I'm not going to question any more of your photos.
Well, thank you for that. And we would rely on the expertise of the building inspector. And whether you think it's repairable, it would probably be more
Well, the.
Structural opinion of the building inspector.
The main trailer is repairable. I've had a carpenter go down and for less than $5,000, we can make it occupied. Structurally, it's A-OK. It's in a flood plain, we all know that. It's four feet off the ground. We also know that what's happening around the world and in particular in the, when you're looking at oceanfrontage, the rules are going to change.
Yep.
And I made a decision three or four years ago that regardless of if we want to use it or not, there was no way I'm going to put a new trailer in an area where if I did, rules are, may change as soon as the problems get interact together. And whatever happens there would automatically.
Right, so I just, let's, let's just be very clear on this as we're talking the here and the now in regards to that property. So those buildings, I'm just going to talk separately for a moment. The buildings, with the exception of the main trailer, of the main mobile home trailer, they've got to go. They're beyond repair. We are not carpenters or experts, so we're going to be relying on the expertise of those that have it to determine whether or not, although you may feel that the, the building is savable, that, that's nice in theory, but we'll be relying on the expertise of, of the building inspector and the unsightly inspector officers. So I would suggest to you, Sean, I don't know if you're prepared to give an opinion whether that's a salvageable building or not. Hey, so knowing that, Mr. Buffett.
I'm not prepared to go to that ritual.
No, so you, then we're.
I realize it's an old trigger.
Right. So now we're faced with the fact that you don't, you, you can't meet that or are not prepared to meet that requirement. Then we will, council will be deciding whether to proceed with a demolition order. Just, and that gives you the option that if, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, that you either clean up the expense at your, at your expense or by the end of 30 days, if it's not, then the municipality does and then that cost is passed on to you on your taxpayer. You're, I just want to make sure you're very aware of that, so.
Could I get an extension beyond 30 days?
That would be a decision to council, but it's, that issue hasn't happened overnight and that property has been in a state of disrepair for many years. So is council wishes to extend 30 days or do we want to go with the order as of today?
I'd like to give them an extra 30 days.
So if we gave you 30 days, that means you have to clean the property up in 60 days. Would that be fair, Sean?
Yeah, so the demolition order would be a 60-day demolition order. At the expiry of those 60 days, if the buildings are still there, we would put the work to tender and, and have the work completed.
And that, that will be the date the demolition order is signed, so.
60 days start from the day that that order is posted.
So if we order, if we sign that order today or tomorrow, the clock starts ticking.
The day that it's posted. So it would be, once that order is actually onsite and posted on the site, that's the day that we date it. So if it, the order is signed tomorrow, but we're not onsite until the following week and it's dated that week, that's when the 60 days start, not from today.
So the issue is for council, do you want to give Mr. Buffett an extra 30 days? Or do you want to execute the order now? Councillor McDonald.
Just wondering, sir, are you financially able to follow through with this task?
Pardon?
Are you financially able to follow through with this task of the 60 days? Do you think that's enough time for you to remove those trailers and take care of that process? I guess my question is, why would you put yourself through all that?
Let me put it this way. I had an offer on the property with the conditions which I stipulated you would have to remove. I was hoping to say the main trailer, but all the other buildings would have to be removed. And the buyer agreed with that. But we didn't make a decision, you know, whether we were going to take 30 days or 60 days.
Well, the same restrictions would apply if somebody purchased that. They would have to, if they were going to try to save that my while home, they would have to provide an engineer, structural engineer or a letter of, from an engineer, structural integrity of that building, correct?
Correct. If the owners change, the order stays with the property and all the buildings associated with the property.
So back to councillor. We have a second over there? Second of a councillor. All in favor? Contrary minded, so let's be very clear, you have 60 days from the time that that is posted. And if that's posted next week, that's when the clock starts ticking. It's not done, there's no recourse. The demolition goes forward. Good at that?
Yes, fair enough.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
We're going to take a 10-minute recess, please. So we're back. Uh, thank you very much. We're gonna reconvene council and we are going to uh review the minutes of uh our last council meeting, April twenty third. Minutes have been circulated to you. You've had the chance to review them. Were there any errors or omissions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes, uh, council minutes of April twenty third, twenty twenty four?
Tom Woo.
Thank you. Counselor McLeod, second to by.
Second.
Deputy Warden Daphne, all in favor? Contrary minded, motions carried. The minutes have been approved. We're gonna move on to CAO's report. Turn it over to Lee Anne.
Thank you. Uh, so you will be receiving your um C A O report, but just a few items that I want to make highlight of. Um, I have contacted District Commander Josh Weiss about increased presence in um your area, Paul. So he will be uh sending some cars over that way. Um, the volunteer scoring has been done, thanks to all counselors that sent in their scoring. And uh we have an announcement of a provincial representative, but I think Dan is waiting to hear something related to that, but we will be sending three representatives to um, to Halifax for the award ceremony up there. Uh, I've also contacted Public Works related to setting up a uh meeting with Public Works, and I would expect that that will be done um in June or July. Uh, so bring, make sure that you're putting together your concerns to discuss with them. Uh, so our draft uh planning document that is with Upland, it's being finalized, but it has one area left to approve on it. I think there's only one uh decision that is still left to be made. Nathan will be bringing that um that decision back to council uh in the near future. Um, and I had made a mistake on the date that this has to be passed. I had said December tw, December thirty first, but we're actually past the time. It was December twenty twenty three. We've just received a letter from the Pro province that has approved that we have until September thirtieth to pass it. So we have until September thirtieth to pass um our land use bylaw and our minimum planning standards, and we're near the end, uh but that we'll have to start our bylaw process with our first and second readings of it. Uh, related to the municipal building, um, I'm investigating grants that will help fund a consultant or and a, or a study based on the last discussions that we had that we're just not gonna, we're putting the brakes on it a bit right now. Um, so I think that uh NSFM has some grants that are available or FCM, so I think that that would be a good place to start on starting here from the roots and figuring out what it is that we should be doing for our next steps. Um, we're working on a communications plan. It's being drafted on defining the hows we are going to be communicating. So if that is streaming or our newsletters or um how, if you're looking for something, here's where you where you will look for it. So we will be bringing that to council in the near future as well. Couple of things from our departments here. So in our finance and HR department, uh, there Alex has done a great job on a budget report, uh, which after we've passed the budget, she's putting, she's put together a lot of work in a uh budget report. She's gonna be putting that on the website soon, along with the budget and the new tax rate. Um, she has also attended a session and I had a couple of sessions over the last week uh on planning for orientation of new counselors. Um, they were great sessions and lots of good info. So we hope to be bringing that forward or uh going out in the next little bit for council recruitment and council orientation after the um election in October. We are currently in the process of advertising for one can this summer jobs position right now. So if you know of any students who are looking for something, please have them look at our website. And uh Alex has also done some work on the marketing levy process. Um, and there's still some notes that need to be cleaned up on that. Uh, but it's uh to be able to collect the marketing levy from the uh accommodations registries that are out there, similar to Airbnb, VRBO, those types of things. So it's a work in progress at this time. In public works, uh, our heavy garbage has been completed. Uh, hopefully everyone um was able to get rid of their items. It took two weeks to complete in Southern Victoria County and two days to complete in Northern Victoria County. Um, we are unable to weigh because we don't have a weigh station at our Dingwall site, so we weren't able to weigh what we received. But in the south and the Bedak, to be dropped off of the Bedak transfer station, uh, a lot of our products were up, wood was up thirty three percent, metal was up fifteen percent, and miscellaneous heavy garbage was up forty nine percent in our heavy garbage collection. So it is a, it's a welcomed um project that we do work on. Uh, but it, so, okay, so also, um, treated wood is going, its ban is going in full effect on July fifth, twenty twenty four. We've spoken about this before. Um, I've asked Kelly to do a recommendation report on what to do in relation to this. I'm gonna be sending it out, this recommendation report out to council to to discuss, and I think we should bring it to the committee of the whole in June to decide on what steps we should be doing. I know the province's approach right now is for residents to take it to the next center, second generation landfill, which is all the way in Geisbro. It's probably not realistic thing to do, so we should maybe look at some type of um process. So I'm gonna be sending a a recommendation report for discussion at our next committee of the whole. Uh, to let everyone know, our electronics recycling program is expanding and it's going to be including a lot more appliances. Uh, we'll be having information on this on our website, so keep checking that related to it. Um, Jackie, you had a question earlier on the stairs at uh Nails Harbor Beach. So our maintenance staff right now are doing a little bit of upgrade here in the courthouse. Um, as soon as they finish that, they will be installing in D five, the Saint James Road uh Victoria County sign, and they will be getting your stairs installed down there. So it's, it's on their list. It's high, it's moving up the priority list, or it's very high on the prior list, priority list. A reuse center. So a reuse center opened in April. It's going very well. The group that's running the center right now for the first three weeks have raised twenty four hundred dollars. Hmm. And there's one of those planned for the new site uh down north. Uh, in water, the Dingwall Water Tower is one step closer to being brought online. Uh, a few more tests have to be done, but very close. And then at some point, we'll be looking at decommissioning the other water tower that is there. Um, as anyone who has driven through it in the last couple of days, preliminary construction has happened of the Inghamish waterline extension. Uh, so that will be happening over the next three months, so expect some delays in traffic down there. Um, staff right now in, so again, this is in water, staff are lining up a repair on the beach crossing road. They hope to have this done within the next two weeks, so there could be some uh voyage alerts going out in relation to uh water, if there's any issues with water over that time. And we're also um doing work on our second production well in Bucklaw, so that's coming along. In communications, uh Jennifer and Jessica are working on a new summer newsletter that will be distributed in August and um you all should have received a newsletter in the last week or so, uh, so some good work in there uh related to that, and then working on the next one. Uh, in our economic development department, uh, we have an E V study right now, so electric vehicle charging. Um, the study is progressing well. We're looking at a different type of um organization. A feasibility study to see about um installing E V stations around the Cabot Trail to encourage Cabot Trail and surrounding areas to encourage um those, driving those to get a rapid uh charge, but staying a while in in the locations that they're placed also. Um, he also says that he attended a Construction Association of Nova Scotia session and said that there's lots of optimism around around development, which which means good things are happening. Um, we also have Cape Breton Partnership on to present to committee of the whole at the next, um, about their strategic planning. And that will be in June, but they will be coming to council or to committee of the whole. In tourism, uh, Dan's had several meetings. He's met with Cape Breton Community Ventures. He's met with the Inghamish Step Community, Step Committee. Um, he has uh attended the Destination Cape Breton Tourism Engagement Sessions. He's met with Babta. He's met with Festiville Bedak. He's hosted a tourism experience building test project um where we did a possible experience around setting day. So they did setting day out of Bay St. Lawrence this year that could develop into an experience. It was quite the thing. We had some staff um and others that were up at four AM for the fisherman's breakfast and uh joined the family and fishers out on the wharf for setting day. So um we would expect we'll be seeing some uh videos or um pictures in relation to that in the next bit. Um, Curly, you had some questions on the off leash. Curly, you had some questions on the off-leash dog park. The survey closed May 20th. We're, we perceived 59 responses. Forty-four of those were dog owners, 15 were non-dog owners. But half of those plan to have plans to get a dog in the future. And there is a report that's going to become, coming out. The report has a lot of feedback on the location and just general comments, so that will be coming forward. In trails, with spring weight restrictions lifted, work has resumed on one of the two sites in Big Bedak. So our trails work has started again. In recreation, so our recreation members have been engaging nonprofits in discussion on the recreation equipment loan program that we have. And so seeing about delivering equipment to different areas over the next while. They have also been delivering the Victoria County Walking Series. So there's registration for that on our website. And they are working on a plan for an e-bike owner program. So we're expected to receive some of our e-bikes that we've ordered late June and seeing about placement of them in different areas around the county. So we'll bring more of that later on. I also received an update from NSHA. They say that they're going to be giving us a report to be presenting to council for each council session. So that will be included on your, in, on my report that you'll be receiving as well. Couple of other things. So based on the funding announcement that was received today, staff here have been working on a survey to put forward to the proposed area of where the funding was originally applied for. And we will be looking to determine interest in a municipal wastewater system. The survey will be going out sooner rather than later. One survey per property in the air, proposed area. And based on the feedback that we received back on those surveys, we will then be becoming up, we will then be coming up with the scope of the project that we will be going forward with. Couple of other things. I have a question here related to if anyone is interested in doing a coastal protection project. But after I wrote this, I realized that district planning is already doing one. And an RFP has already been released for studies on our watershed areas. Letting everyone know that the Inghamish Library location is going to be changing in 2025. It's yet to be determined where. But the, we've received word from the landlord that they will not be offering it up for renewal anymore. And just one last thing to congrats to the Cabot Trail Relay on another successful event that was, that happened here this weekend. That's all that I have.
Any questions, comments? councillor McDonald?
It's just one of this probably was already put out through communications with regard to the tree lumber. Has there been anything put on their website regarding that or the newsletter to date? Because that's only a little over a month away. That, that's correct. And that's, that's residential and commercial use?
Yes. Yeah, it is.
So that we don't get the normal that we didn't hear about this or we didn't know.
Yep.
And I know it's been put out since.
Yeah, I think we've been putting it out for a while, but we're going to ramp it up. And I'm going to be sending you an information sheet related to it that the province has, has released on what is and what isn't.
Great.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's a big, it's a big deal. It's a big deal.
Councillor Oregon?
I don't know. The last time we had Staff Sergeant Wiesin for an update, can we get him in again?
Yep.
I think it's been a while.
I will ask for that for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor McNeil?
Nope. I will mention that during the Nova Scotia Federation Municipalities Conference, Spring Conference that was here, the individual responsible for the Coastal Protection Act, her name is Marilyn McMorris. She presented and both myself and Warden McCaisack from Inverness County. We indicated that we'd have some interest to have in the discussion with the department or with coastal protection. So we are, sorry, it's Megan McMorris. We are, she has suggested meeting on June 20th. So is that of interest to council before we commit? It is for council and staff from both municipalities, and I suspect maybe it'll be open to Richmond as well. So I would like to suggest that we host it here because it's central. So we will proceed with that invite to her on the 20th. And it won't be a council meeting, but it would, it may not be a council meeting. But anyway, if everybody's okay with that, we'll proceed with the invitation and the notice. Thank you. Anything else?
Okay, we're going to move on. To district concerns, we'll start with district number one.
Thank you, Warden. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff that collected the heavy garbage and also the staff with dealing some issues afterwards in my area. They did a great job and I want to commend them on that. And also I'm getting quite a few good comments on the newsletter that went out, so thank you again for that. I wonder if we could have Steve McDonald come to council or have a meeting with, especially for spring and summer issues regarding the transportation issue or road issues.
Yep. So I've contacted him and Keith and they will be coming in June or July.
Okay, that's great. And I also asked the MLA and Steve McDonald if they would come to district one for a tour of the area too. And with that, I have a proclamation here. Go ahead.
Please proceed. I better put my glasses on or?
World Oceans Week, June 1st to June 8th. In recognition of the 15th anniversary of World Oceans Day awareness. Whereas in 2009, the United Nations proclaimed June 8th to be World Oceans Day each year around the world. And whereas since 1992, Canada played a key role in the United Nations recognizing, recognizing World Oceans Day. And whereas World Oceans Week education was founded in 2009 to encourage all to honor, celebrate, educate, protect and preserve our waterways and oceans as well as the habitat along and in our waterways and oceans where 80% of the oxygen we breathe is generated, is generated 20% from trees. Whereas World Oceans Week education has designated June 1st to June 8th as World Oceans Week around the world and launched the World, the Ocean Hero Program worldwide. Whereas World Oceans Week education urges all Canadians to take action to conserve water, protect trees, preserve waterways and shorelines, reduce emissions, reduce their carbon footprint and protect the habitat along and in our waterways. And whereas World Oceans Week education urges all Canadians to help our marine life recover by avoiding seafoods on the endangered list. And now therefore I, Paul McNeil, by virtue of the authority vested in me, councillor of Victoria County, do hereby proclaim June 1st to June 8th as World Oceans Week in our region and encourage our residents of Victoria County to act actively conserve, preserve and protect our waterways, oceans and have habitat every day. In witness thereof, I set my hand and caused the seal of Victoria County to be affixed to this document on June, on May 27, 2024.
So do you have a, do you want to make that a motion to proclaim? Do we have a second for that, please? Sorry, councillor MacLeod, all in favor? Contrary minded. Thank you councillor McNeil. Newly noted. Councillor Oregon?
Thank you. My apologies, Steph, for not having this rolled up, but you will get it later on this evening or tomorrow. I'd like to thank the following people, Tanya Best from Inghamish, Dorothy Best from Smolbrooks, South Harbour, and Kelsey Dixon for the White Point area for promoting the community cleanup weekend and the handed out the garbage bags and gloves for me. And also I would be amiss not to mention Anne Marie MacLeod for organizing the Gordy Budge Annual Cleanup. It was a great, great thing for the community. I can't tell you how many people came out for it and they ended with a potluck dinner. Thank you for the beach stairs coming out. Recently, there was a TV show that was filmed on Nails Harbor Beach. There was a local girl from North Inghamish that was on it and it's about beach glass. So that may be aired sometime. I'd like to promote the Nova Scotia Walks Victoria County Walking Series on June 8th at 10:00 AM. It's at Cabot Education Centre. Please come on out and support. And June 20th at 6:00 PM, it's at the old Blackborough Campground. That's for District Seven, District Eight is on there too. That's, well, I'll tell you, it's June 8th at 1 o'clock in the afternoon at Money Point Road and June 26th at 11:00, 11:00 AM at North Highlands Nordic. Also, I would like $275 taken out of my district budget for the Cabot Trail Lions Club for their annual golf tournament. And I'm not sure Leanne, who I talked to about this, but car tires, cars and truck tires are not being picked up in North of Smokey in a long time. And it's a safety and unsightly issue. I was talking to one of the local grad owners. He was supposed to give me some information, but I, I have pictures. It's, I think it was before Halloween, that the last time they were picked up. They were, yeah, they were told that in the spring it was weight constriction, but I don't, I don't think that for sure. But if you could look into that for me and I'll try to get some more information from, from them. And that is, that is my district concerns right now. I'll take up the rest of the stuff we have, we have a meeting with Mr. McDonald. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor MacLeod?
Well, I have a few of them. We have a presentation with Diane, MLA's Keith Bain secretary last week, or two weeks ago. So she was saying, talking about the mobile MRI is going to come. So I wonder if we can send a letter to Keith Bain, MLA, asking if we can bring the MRI mobile to Victoria County, either to Buchanan Memorial or Victoria.
County.
Victoria County.
Do you want to put that in the form for motion?
Can I put a motion? I, councillor MacLeod, move to send a letter to MLA Keith Bain to let him know we will be, like to have the mobile MRI, MRI mobile in Victoria County, either in Buchanan or Victoria Memorial Hospital.
Do we have a second for that, please? Second by councillor McNeil, all in favor? Contrary minded, motions carried.
I was going to say, instead of if, can we not put both?
Okay. But it's only one model, so.
No, but.
Oh, sure, whatever.
Both locations. Yep, you're okay with that. The mover's okay with that. The seconder's okay with that. Yep, we're good.
Sounds good. Thanks. Then I want, I would like to take from my district budget $2,000 for Two Bay Homeowners Association.
Two, I'm sorry, two.
$2,000. Yep.
Okay, two.
To, it's Two Bay Homeowners Association.
Do we have a second for that, please? Second by councillor Longval, all in favor? Contrary minded, motions carried.
Thank you. And I wonder if we couldn't list, they're asking me, we can list the comfort centers of Victoria County on the website? Maybe just where they are on the address. And now, if it is possible?
Okay.
Then I think, we know the status about the Seal Island Bridge. I know we have some, when they start the new one, how it's going with the inspections, people is a little concerned around there. Of course, I think it's safe, but.
Yeah, it's supposed to be replaced within 15 years. That's my understanding. And they just conducted some inspections and repairs on it. But probably when we meet with Steve McDonald and Keith Bain, we could probably get an update unless you want one prior to that.
I can wait for, for that. Thank you. And Florence Shaw was 101 birthday in other words, so I would like to send a certificate to her to congratulate her from council.
Okay, thank you. We would do that.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Deputy Warden?
Warden, just a couple of things. First, I want to send a thank you to our MLA Keith Bain and the province of Nova Scotia for the announcement this morning for infrastructure in the Inghamish area. It's a first step to get the, get the money. Now we got to see what the residents want and we'll be doing a survey in the near future to get the, the interest and gauge where the system would go. And based on that, we'll develop a system based on who's interested in hooking up to it. So once again, I just want to say thank you to MLA Bain and the province for that. It's the biggest investment in Victoria County that I think we've ever had. So it was great news and again, hopefully things will go smoothly. The second thing is, I know the last couple of years with graduation taking place in all the high schools. I think we gave $500 to each high school to help with Safe Grad or actually with the grad itself. I'd just like to make a motion that we do that again to the three schools, I believe it is.
It's a thousand.
Was it a thousand? It's a thousand dollars each that we give to each of the schools again this year. I make that a motion.
Do we have a second for that? Second by councillor Longval, all in favor? Contrary minded, motions carried.
Safe grad or graduation ceremonies. Yeah, kind of leave it up to them where they want to spend it. But I know there have been fundraising like crazy and. Oh, the other thing is, based on the daycare being here today, they asked for a letter of support. So I'm just make a motion that we do a letter of support to the province stating that we are in favor of the executive director not having to have the ECE classification. And then maybe they can look at that and change the regulations to make it more feasible for the daycares to find an executive director. So I make that a motion.
Do we have a second for that, please? Second by councillor McDonald, all in favor? Contrary minded, motions carried.
And that's it for today. Thank you everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Councillor McDonald?
Yes, thank you, Warden. Just a few things. This afternoon, community cleanup has commenced in Dingwall. Merkle Land Resort had spearheaded that and the Bay St. Lawrence Community Centre will be hosting theirs on June the 12th at 5:00 PM. And people are asked to meet at the Bay St. Lawrence Community Centre. And their cleanup will take place at that time. Just looking through here, I'd just like to give a shout out to Jeffrey Gwynne Trucking for obviously doing their heavy garbage collection. I had nothing but just call after call of people very pleased with how quick and efficient they were in doing that in the northern part of the county. So good work to those gentlemen. There was kind of a joke going around. It was like the Red Army came and they just got the job done. It's a done deal. They were very fast and efficient. I'm just looking through here. If I could also, just so the minutes will reflect, take $275 out of my district eight budget for the Cabot Trails Lions Club Annual Golf Tournament. And I've already sent that to Zina, but just like the minutes to show that please. And also if I could take $500 from my district eight budget in support of the Northern Cabinet Landing Society for cabinet events, which will be held July 7th this year in Sugarloaf. The last one?
Yeah. Cabinet Landing.
Northern Cabinet Landing Society.
Landing. Landing.
I'm usually very vocal, I suppose. And lastly, just with sorry. Yeah. Lastly, just to touch base with Republic Works, there was two things. I was in discussion with Steve McDonald in regard to, or rather through email, I had some calls from residents of Northside Road just down over the Ascapay Bridge there that the road was, there was maintenance down on the road. They went in with the loader and that, but the residents weren't pleased with the first initial outcome of the road. And as far as I know, that the grader is coming back relatively in June sometime. So that concern has been forwarded off Steve McDonald and also asked them to contact their MLA with regard to that and Steve McDonald. And just lastly, I would like to make recognition to a gentleman who just retired yesterday. As of 30 years of service with the Department of Transportation on the English Town Ferry, Mr. Travis Brion, who's celebrated 30 years of working in that industry. So just thank you Travis for his years of service. And Travis resided from South Harbour in District Eight. And that's it, sir, for District Eight.
Thank you very much. Councillor Longva? Thank you very much. Council Longville.
Um, I also have been receiving positive comments about the new uh, and I think what Pearl mentioned, uh, having the Comfort Centers on the website, it would be nice maybe to put it in the next edition of the newsletter too, just so people have them. Um, I was wondering about, um, if we are going to make an advisory zoning committee that was brought up by the Uplands, uh, gentleman when he was here, and I understand there already is, and there was another zone zoning committee of council before.
Yeah, there, there is a area advisory committee for the Village of Bedak, and I believe when we talked about the, uh, minimum standards that the remaining, uh, the municipality would be consist of two councillors, north and two south, and I I believe I'm correct on that, and I would have to go back and see who was named to that, but, uh, am I correct on that? Does that ring a bell?
I mean, that one was only when there was zoning in Bedak, right?
No, but the, the outside of Bedak, the councillor for Bedak would sit on the Bedak area one, but the broader one for the municipality itself, it was to consist of two councillors, north and two south.
Okay, but has it already been struck or?
Uh, would have to check and see if we named them, but that was, I believe, the agreement.
Yeah, I, I remember us talking about having two north.
I, I thought we did, but we'll check, and if we haven't, we'll, we'll appoint them next meeting.
I know the one that did access before was you, Pearl Ann Hall, was the, the old advisory.
That's with the plant, yeah. That's with the Eastern District, that's Eastern District planning, that's separate. But if we haven't, we'll check on that councillor, and if we haven't appointed them, uh, we will at the next council meeting.
Yeah, and then would there be people from the public on that, uh, committee as well?
Hmm, potentially, yes. So we'll take a look what the makeup would be. That's true too. Yeah. Right, so, yeah, let's, we'll, we'll defer that till for the next meeting, and we'll give you an update on what the status is. I know we appointed people, but we haven't gone any further down that road yet.
And once we pass the zoning, then, um, who would be responsible for enforcing zoning? Rules. If people break.
It'd be the district, I it'd be the district planning.
Eastern District Planning, same as the gentleman that was in today about unsightly.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, um.
Committee itself, I guess, would be the committee itself.
I'd like to, uh, I did have a request from a constituent about, um, that they said accessibility to the meetings isn't good for them because, or for a lot of people because it's in the afternoon and people work during the day, and they'd like to, um, see meetings held uh, in the evening.
Well, you did, uh, you did talk to me earlier about having some afternoon meetings, so.
Yeah, um, yeah, like.
During the summer, we may go to, that'll be a decision we'll make today before we leave. If we may uh, schedule our summer meetings at five o'clock in the afternoon, but, and that'll make it accessible to them.
You're talking about they want to come to council and sit down here with us?
Yeah, some constituents were saying that they can't make the council meetings ever because the time of day that they are, because they're working during the day. But personally, also, which is what I spoke earlier to, uh, the warden and councillors, is that I also work every day, and I've, my shop's closed today. It's been a very busy tourist season so far. And I'm losing money, which I can't really afford to do.
Yeah.
By coming.
Good.
Also constituents would like them later as well.
That will be good.
Uh, then I'd like to make a motion to take from my district budget, four hundred dollars for the Goose Cove Cemetery, four hundred for the Riverside Cemetery, four hundred for Pine Hill Cemetery, three hundred for the North River War Veterans Memorial, and, uh, three hundred for Bedak Festival, or Festival of Bedak. I will. Uh, yeah, so I made that motion to take all of that money from my.
Oh, you, if it's less than a thousand, no, long individual, yeah.
Good. I'll just send, uh, a note to Zina and Steph.
Great.
I believe that's it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any emotions tonight, Deputy Warden, but I will say just a couple of quick comments. One, I joined the NSFM conference last week. I received a number of compliments from other municipalities about us having uh, washrooms available. They thought that was an excellent program, not only in Bedak, but when I mentioned they were available around the trail. Uh, they were very complimentary. Um, Fraser is not here today. Um, the sign down at St. James Road, I know you mentioned in your notes, Leanne, that there's a new sign coming there. Has the old sign come down yet? Okay.
Our staff are gonna get there.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I don't know if we have to wait for a new one, just because the, the comments are about the current state of disrepair. It's probably more.
Haven't had the staff available at this point. Have the sign, we just don't have the staff.
Okay, no, it's, it's just there were multiple comments about the current state of that existing sign. It's in bad repair. Uh, I just want to mention to acknowledge about community cleanups that Don McKinnon spearheaded the one for the Village of Bedak, so just want to acknowledge that she and her group did an excellent, excellent job a couple of weeks ago. And I think, um, that's it. I mentioned coastal protection. So the next item on the, I'm sorry, yeah.
Quick one, um, the Inish, the Pride Festival's coming up at the end of June, and I know, uh, the organizer had sent a letter of support asking for support on different levels, and I know it went to you, Norman, and did we ever decide on supporting you, or that's just, uh, like a sponsorship? There was a letter sent out, and it must have been about a month ago or more. I just don't think we ever discussed it.
Did you have an amount? Did she have?
Oh, yeah, there was on the letter. I don't.
Yeah, I forwarded off council, seeing how, just there was different sponsorship.
Can't remember the amounts right now.
And maybe before the end of council, just, um, in check, see if you can find what the amount was.
Jess, can I say something?
Yep.
Uh, Jess, I have to say, I received a phone call. Uh, the person didn't want to give me the name, no address, nowhere that she was against of the parade, and it's, you know, it's free country. Uh, just, he wants to uh, note to council that he was, uh, no agreed to give some tax dollars for that, but I say I will be just putting the table, but it's, it's a personal opinion.
Yep, everyone has a personal opinion.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Night. Yeah, thank you.
I got it here.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, I neglected to say that the Pudorland X Biosphere is having an expo in Bedak at the Emporian on June ninth from eleven thirty to two o'clock. And there'll be information tables on, uh, what is the biosphere and the watershed and and lots more information, but there'll also be some artisan vendors at that event. So I welcome everyone to come to it.
Okay, thank you.
Nice day.
Will be.
You.
April twenty-sixth.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry. Uh, Rainbow Partner is the top level, fourteen thousand dollars. Platinum Partner, seventy-eight hundred dollars. Gold Partner, thirty-three hundred. Silver Partner, thirteen twenty, and Bronze Partner, eight hundred and forty.
So just here, he says to, uh, the grant, community grants, we didn't pass.
That's separate.
That's totally separate. From this ask, correct?
Yeah, that's separate, yep.
So what level do you think is appropriate?
I'd say at least the silver, thirteen hundred and twenty dollars.
The Deputy Warden has mentioned thirteen twenty? Silver. Sorry, that was for the Inish.
Yes.
Thirteen twenty?
One thousand three hundred and twenty.
One thousand three hundred and twenty. So we good with silver, thirteen twenty?
I'll second that.
Okay, if it's been moved by the.
Make that a motion, yep.
It's been seconded by, uh, Council Oregon, all in favor? Contrary minded, the motion is carried, and we'll provide the sponsorship.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to, we had two meetings today, one in regards to municipal grants. Uh, do we need a motion to approve the, uh, the grants that we, uh, went through this morning?
A move that we accept as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that, please? Council McNeil has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion is carried. We also had a, uh, water budget finance meeting this morning, and, uh, we need a motion to accept the recommendation from that, uh, meeting. Moved by Council McNeil, seconded by
Second.
Council McLeod, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion is carried. It's been approved. Any correspondence?
Correspondence has been, uh, sent out to you and, um, sent as requested? Yes. Um, there is the piece of correspondence, uh, from in relation with that, in relation to the urgent need for action to ensure essential telecommunications services in Cape Breton. Um, and it was not sent to us, it was sent to Jaime and Keith Bain, so just, um, you've all received it. Just wanting it to be, wanted it to be on your radar.
So that correspondence has been tabled.
But they didn't put any names. It's just like a forum, right? It's like a draft, because they don't have any names.
No, it doesn't. Signatures of concerned citizens.
Yeah.
And and we did receive one from Sabda as well, uh, related to Time Bank, and Time Bank is coming to council or committee the whole in June.
So we'll, we'll table it and tell. That's it for correspondence? Uh, any committee reports?
Um, just have one.
Yep.
I just let it know, uh, the direct transit vehicles are in the road, if I just see them. So, and just asking, uh, for north, we need drivers, so if you hear anybody, please uh, let us know, please.
We have zero drivers now, or?
It's only one, but, uh, you know, summer's coming, uh, the people is asking for weekends, but we can afford weekends because we don't have drivers. So more drivers, more service, so.
Any, any questions from the public? None received? Very good, thank you. Our next council meeting is yes. Well, I was gonna do that. That was my next, when I set the date, I was gonna set the time.
Perfect.
Thank you. Good reminder, though. So our next meeting is, I didn't get a sticky, so I June eighteenth, and we've had a request to have council at five PM, as opposed to two. Is anybody oppose? Both. We, we would do both at five o'clock. Next meeting committee, the whole is June eighteenth. So we'll see if we can ch- change them to five o'clock. If they're in agreement, we will. If they're not, I'm sorry, we'll have to censor pre-scheduled, so.
Yeah, but the, it's shorter notice for the first one. Like just leave that one at two, and then, uh, ask maybe for the second one if they could come later, five?
Yep. Yep. We'll try to be, to accommodate your request. And, uh, yes.
Noon on June twenty-fourth, too?
Yes.
AGM, so can that be changed to? Or her?
Sure. If they're okay with that, yeah, we can do that. I don't know. Stop, uh, do it after council. We'll see, because, yeah, because I had to put the notice to the public and all this.
We don't have to confirm today, but we'll let people know. Anything else? Just one other item I have before we go. Um, we we were talking this morning at one of our meetings, we needed to know the, uh, some clarity around the request from North Highlands groomer and also the waterfront, so we just need to know, did we just send, give us an update whether or not that was on the original budget that we approved? No, we don't need to know right now, but if you'd let us know, uh, some, before the end of the week or before next council meeting, the sooner we know, the better, so that, that the, so that we can let them know. Which, both or?
The, the North Highlands Nordic was not in there, so that would have to be approved by council.
Okay.
Separately.
If it wasn't, then we'll bring it forward at the next council meeting. Okay, what, do you want to talk about it now, or?
How much is it? It's what?
Yeah, because we have, uh, concept projects, it's only one fifty, right?
It was a hundred thousand in one, in, all in a year?
Yeah. But can we, can we check the slides that, uh, on the, for the budget that time? There was an extra slide on thing, it had the two things that, uh, we took something and put something there.
We took outside. We took out sidewalks and we put in housing. And then the slide, special projects and place making initiatives, Cabot Trail one hundred and waterfront Bedak. I, I don't think.
Do they do application?
We did bring it up, it was there, yeah.
They were here. They were here.
That day.
Yeah. Yeah, but I thought for sure we had put it in. I was positive it was in there. I have to back and check the slide. I remember seeing the slide, remember with the two, with the waterfront end. Because we were level enough budget.
We'll have to.
I was gonna say, yeah, maybe we should just look into it.
Yeah, maybe what we will do, we've, uh, on occasion, a special meeting at council, so maybe we can if, we'll look it up and see if we can get the background on it.
Good.
And if need be, we'll have a discussion around it, so. So anything else come to council tonight? Dates and times have been, and, uh, I just want to thank everybody for their, uh, help and assistance, staff and councillor for attending that, uh, session this morning, and recognize the Deputy Warden for the work of bringing it forward of, uh, that project coming to fruition, so. Well done, sir. We have a motion to adjourn?
Well.
Thank you.